Will give us wisdom and knowledge to determine to make the right decisions for our citizens. If you need Jesus Christ, we pray and we thank you. Amen.
Amen. Our five languages salute the United States of America and truly welcome for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to thank everyone who made here this evening. First on the agenda tonight is approval of our amendments for the meeting on September the 25th. They have been distributed in addition to actions or corrections. There are none? We need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion approved. We have a second. Motion second on favor, signed by the Senate, aye. Aye opposed, like saying. This motion carried unanimously. Presentation, oath of office, chief.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. It's my pleasure to introduce some of our newest officers. Our first go with Officer Gilan Asunsion. He was born in West Covina, California, but spent most of his life in Sebring, Florida, where he was raised by his parents, Gilbert and Dean. He's the eldest of three brothers with younger siblings, Chavez and Josiah. Gilan has been married to his high school sweetheart, DeAndre, for four years. Together, they share relationships spanning fourteen years. His family serves as the foundation of his strength, motivation, and wavering support. Known by those around him for his compassion and reluctance to help others, Gilan has always had a heart for service. He's consistently demonstrated a deep commitment for serving others. Thank you, Gilan. Nicholas Dwyer. Was born in Boston, Massachusetts, and has been a Florida resident for the past twenty-six years. After graduating high school, he relocated to Broward from there to Orange County, where he earned his associate's degree from Valencia, later attended UCF, graduating with a bachelor's arts, and film writing with a minor in criminology. Nicholas felt called to a career in public service, so applied to our police department. We sponsored him in the police academy at Valencia. Nicholas looks forward to a long and meaningful career in law enforcement. He aspires to join the criminal investigation division and eventually work with NBI, the Metro Bureau of Investigation. He is proud to serve the central Florida community he calls home and is committed to protecting and serving the residents of Winter Garden. Thank you, Nicholas. Devin Guusen. Was born and raised in Johannesburg, South Africa, and moved to the US at the age of sixteen. After spending four years in Irvine, California, he relocated to Oakland, Florida, where he still lives after over a decade. In February twenty-one, Devin joined the US Army, serving two years on active duty with deployments in South Korea and upstate New York. He earned two early promotions, three Army Achievement medals, one Army Commendation Medal, and served as team leader while still lower enlisted. He is currently continuing his service in the Army Reserve. Devin has long aspired to a career in law enforcement, a goal he is finally able to pursue after becoming a US citizen. He plans to finish his bachelor's degree in advance within the department. He has strong interest in joining specialized units such as SWAT and the tech team. Thank you, Devin. Guy Torres. Was born and raised in Brazil before relocating to the US and pursued greater opportunities. Over the course of his career, he has held numerous managerial positions which have honed his leadership ability, sense of responsibility, and dedication to excellence. Now embarking on a career in law enforcement, he is committed to continuous growth as an officer. His long-term goal is to serve as specialized units such as SWAT or financial crimes. He considers it a privilege to protect and serve the community with integrity and professionalism. Thank you, Guy. Kevin Heben. He was born and raised in Naples, Florida. He earned his bachelor's degree in criminal justice with a minor in homeland security, emergency management with the UFCF in twenty-one. That same year, he graduated to top ten percent of his class academically from the police academy in southwest Florida. Kevin began his law enforcement career in twenty-one in the Collier County Sheriff's Office, where he served as deputy sheriff for approximately three years. During his tenure, he was recognized for both the Life Save Award and the Phoenix Award for his exemplary service. Recently relocating to Winter Garden to be closer to family, Kevin is proud to continue his law enforcement career with the Winter Garden Police Department. He is committed to serving the community with dedication and integrity for many years to come. Thank you, Kevin. George Morella. Is a dedicated professional with a bachelor's degree in political science and over a decade of experience as a private investigator specializing in insurance fraud and domestic cases. Before transitioning into law enforcement, he built a strong foundation and investigative work that continues to inform his approach today. George has been married to his wife Victoria for ten years, is a proud father to their daughter. Outside of his professional life, he enjoys powerlifting and values spending quality time with his family, maintaining a healthy balance between his career and personal passions. Thank you, George. Officer Joel Bajet. Is originally from Puerto Rico, where his parents still reside. He now lives in Florida alongside his younger brother and nephew, Joel. Proudly serves as a sergeant in the United States Army Reserve, a role that has still been held, a strong sense of discipline, leadership, dedication to service. Following his active duty service, Joel transitioned to civilian roles, working as a security officer universal, later as a spy specialist with the Orange County Sheriff's Office. His passion for law enforcement is especially focused on narcotics investigations and community engagement. He aspires to become a detective aiming to protect and serve while fostering meaningful connections with the community. He remains deeply committed to making a positive impact through a continued life of service. Okay, gentlemen. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, state your name.
Aye, George Scott.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect and defend.
Protect and defend.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the United States of America.
The laws of the state of Florida.
The laws of the state of Florida.
And their charter and ordinances.
And their charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Winter Garden.
The city of Winter Garden.
That I am due qualified.
That I am due qualified.
Will faithfully and impartially.
Will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of police officer.
Perform the duties of police officer.
For the city of Winter Garden.
For the city of Winter Garden.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Okay, anybody that's going to be penning their relative, husband, spouse, come on up. Officers, you can blade sideways. We're going to pin their back. I get the privilege of penning Officer Dwyer. Step right, we're doing all of them. Put them on till you hear them yell.
Or you see blood.
Are we all done? And I'll see you tomorrow. Congratulations. Thank y'all for making the corner of ours. We have a great, great place to find. We appreciate y'all helping us and being here. Thank you very much. And your families. Thank you. And next would be proclamation twenty-five dash thirteen. Anyone here? You see that?
Yeah.
This, come on.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you for this.
Proclamation twenty-five dash thirteen. Whereas breast cancer is the most commonly diagnosed cancer among women, the metastatic breast cancer, MBC, the stage when cancer spreads beyond the breast to other parts of the body, is responsible for ninety-eight percent of all breast cancer deaths. And despite advances in early detection and treatment, approximately thirty percent of early-stage breast cancers will eventually metastasize with no known cure. And whereas in twenty-twenty-five, an estimated forty-two thousand, six hundred and eighty Americans and six hundred and eighty-five thousand people globally will lose their lives to metastatic breast cancer. And whereas despite the staggering toll, less than thirteen percent of breast cancer research, global funding is dedicated specifically to MBC, leading patients with limited treatment options and no cure. And whereas increased research funding is critical to transferring metastatic breast cancer from a terminal diagnosis into a chronic survivable condition, offering patients more time and more hope. Whereas significant racial disparities persist in breast cancer outcomes. Black women are forty percent more likely to die from breast cancer than white women in the US. And Hispanic women face breast cancer as a leading cause of cancer-related death. These inequities demand urgent action through research investment, equitable care, and inclusive education. And whereas, met- haven't, haven't born?
Metaviver.
Metaviver?
Yes.
Research and support and national nonprofit exclusively funds stage-four MBC research and the Global Light Up MBC Campaign elevates MBC awareness, amplifies patient voices, and honors lives lost by illuminating more than one hundred and seventeen landmarks globally in a tri-color MBC awareness ribbon colors of teal for healing, green for hope, pink breast cancer origin, each year on October thirteenth. And whereas the city of Winter Garden, Florida is proud to stand with the MBC community by shining a light on their challenges, their courage, and the critical need for dedicated research that saves lives. Therefore, it is my great pleasure and privilege as the mayor of the city of Winter Garden to hereby proclaim October thirteenth, twenty-twenty-five, as Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day in the city of Winter Garden and encourage all residents to support the Light Up MBC campaign by illuminating landmarks in teal, green, and pink, raising awareness, navigating for greater equity and investment in metastatic breast cancer research. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
And whatever you would like to say.
Oh, thank you. Oh, I appreciate that. Well, thank you so much for that. I really appreciate it. So yes, I just wanted to thank you, Mayor Reese, and your staff for having me and honor in honor of receiving this proclamation on behalf of myself and the one hundred and seventy thousand women living with metastatic breast cancer. Many people are unaware of this stage of the disease. I'll share some facts with all of you that you may be unaware of. Metastatic means that the cancer has left the breast and spread to other parts of the body. Thirty percent of early-stage breast cancer patients will develop metastatic breast cancer at some point, and once that happens, there is no cure, and they are in treatment for the rest of their lives. Statistically, when you were told that you have metastatic breast cancer, you are only given twenty-four to thirty-six months to live. But with new technology, many women are living longer. Unfortunately, the reality is that nearly one hundred and seventeen people per day die of metastatic breast cancer. While early-stage breast cancer patients are considered survivors, when they finish their treatment, metastatic breast cancer patients will always be in treatment, and the disease is considered terminal. So for us, we are called thrivers, as we try to live every day to the best of our ability with hope. I myself was diagnosed in two thousand and fourteen with early-stage breast cancer in New Jersey. And even with the standard treatment I received, my cancer still returned in two thousand and nineteen after only six months after moving here to Winter Garden. At the time, I had a cough that would not go away. And after lots of testing and biopsies, I was told I had stage-four metastatic breast cancer, and I was devastated. I've been very fortunate to live six years on my first line of treatment and was considered a very good responder up until two thousand and twenty-four, when a PET scan revealed that my cancer had spread to my spine. Throughout my journey, I became aware of Metaviver, which is a nonprofit organization that funds research and grants, and I became an ambassador with Light Up MBC, which is a global campaign that lights over two hundred and seventy landmarks this year across the world in the MBC colors of teal, green, and pink. As an ambassador, my job is to spread awareness, educate, and try to secure landmarks to light. I am very proud of some of the things that I have been able to accomplish this year. The Aloft Hotel in downtown Orlando will be lighting in teal, green, and pink. I was also honored to be chosen as one of the nine people to share my story on Light Up MBC Live. It's an event on October thirteenth from eight to ten PM. And I'll be telling my story from Ford's Garage in Winter Garden, Florida, as they are hosting a dine and donate fundraising event, and they'll be donating fifteen percent of each sale to Metaviver, along with a watch party so that my friends, family, community, and other thrivers can enjoy the evening together. Please visit metaviver.org to learn more about metastatic breast cancer, to find out how to watch Light Up MBC, and ways to donate. Thank you so much.
Maybe I missed a win at Ford Garage?
So that's on Tuesday, oh, sorry, Monday night, and that's this Monday, October thirteenth, which is National Metastatic Breast Cancer Awareness Day.
Yeah.
And it's this Monday night at Ford's Garage. And it's from four to ten is the fundraiser. That anyone can come. You can dine with your family, and fifteen percent will go right to Metaviver. But from eight to ten is the show. We'll air live, and I'll be telling my story from there. So thank you so much. I appreciate it. Thank you for your time.
My sister is going through the same thing. Thank you for giving me your time. I'd love to talk to you after. Dear, dear, my heart is why I do what I do, because I lost my mom. So thank you. Thank you for so much. I appreciate that. That was tough to follow. But thank you so much for what you did, for that proclamation. I love that, as you know, where my background is. But it's a pleasure to be here. So thank you for giving me a few minutes to just introduce myself and just tell a little bit about who I am and why I'm here. My name is Amy Callar Pickford. I am the new chief executive officer of Advent Health Winter Garden. I'm not new to Advent Health, only new to this community. So I've been with Advent Health for more than three decades, recently coming from our sister campus in Altamont Springs. I was blessed to be able to come here to Winter Garden, which is great, because I live here. So I now get to work, play, and live right out in the same community. So it's wonderful being here. I did think it was important to also share a little bit about some of what I've done at Advent Health Altamont Springs. So part of why I do what I do is because my mom was diagnosed with breast cancer at an early age. And I saw that. I saw what she went through, and I wanted to make a difference. So building cancer programs and also baby programs is something that's very near and dear to my heart. So I did that at Altamont Springs. We expanded and built a very tertiary-level cancer program and also expanded our mom-baby program. And I'm having the blessed honor to step into a role where my predecessor and my boss, Carrie Vargas, started something that I get to finish. So I feel very blessed to be able to do that here in Winter Garden. So as you know, we are expanding. We have a tower project going. Up in our tower project, we have additional beds for progressive care patients, so patients that need a little bit more care than just the average medical surgical. We don't want them leaving the community. That's something that's been very important to us, keeping care close to home. So we're proud that we're going to be able to expand that services to this community and not transfer our patients to Orlando unless it's something a little more life-threatening like an open-heart surgery or something neuro. We are also adding mom-baby. This is a growing community. I'm proud that it's a growing community. I'm proud we're going to be able to do it in our own neighborhood. Again, moms right now are leaving this community. The closest is eleven and a half miles and or fourteen miles. So now we'll be able to keep that. If you're pregnant and maybe you're the husband, you've got to drive your wife to the hospital. That's not so fun. So we have actually delivered babies in our emergency department here. So I know our ER department is thrilled that we're going to have a mom-baby unit, that they can take care of that work upstairs. We will also be providing NICU so for our tiniest of patients, should they need care, our plan is that all babies go home with mom and dad and the rest of the family when they are ready to leave. But should they need a little bit of extra care, we are also going to have NICU in there. Simultaneous to the tower project that's going on, we also have our cancer institute being built, which is a wonderful addition. So proud that you proclamated that day, because that's something that also will be important to us. Our cancer program will expand into breast cancer care, colorectal cancer care, along with GU. We are excited to be able to provide this service from beginning to end. So our patients again will not have to leave our Winter Garden community. So we're very excited to be able to do that here. I feel very blessed and honored to be serving this community. I look forward to working with all of you on additional levels. I know John and I have had the pleasure of meeting. I think we might have seen each other three times this week already, so it's been a pleasure. But again, I got to see you today at a COE, and I really look forward to partnering with you. Anything I can do to be a better member to this community, it's definitely what we are here for. Advent Health's mission is extending the healing ministry of Christ. I'm glad I get to do that on top of running a hospital and caring for this beautiful community. If I can do anything, I really hope that you will reach out to me and let me know. Thank you for letting me come here today.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming. And same here, if you have any questions, we're easing in.
Wonderful. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Second reading of public hearing of the most ordinances, ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-five.
Yes, sir. Ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-five and ordinance of the city of Winter Garden, Florida, amending chapter twenty-six, article Roman II of the city of Winter Garden Code of Ordinances regarding the Winter Garden Cemetery, providing for revisions to definitions, residency requirements for purchase of lots, amniches, ownership rights, and fees provided for codification, conflict severability, and an effective date.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Commissioners, this is the second reading of this ordinance. We have made the changes that were recommended in our last meeting concerning the immediate family definitions. The resident staff will recommend approval of ordinance twenty-five dash thirty-five. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from the commission? This is a public hearing. We will open the public hearing if anyone wishes to speak. Saying none, we will close the public hearing. And if there are no questions from the commission, we need a motion.
Motion to approve. Or any means?
Twenty-five dash thirty-five.
Twenty-five.
Okay, we have a motion approved. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Under regular business, resolution twenty-five dash eleven.
Yes, sir. Resolution twenty-five dash eleven. A resolution of the city of Winter Garden, Florida, adopting fees and charges related to the Winter Garden Cemetery pursuant to chapter twenty-six, article Roman II of the city of Winter Garden Code of Ordinances, providing for severability and effectiveness.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Just to bring everybody's attention, I discovered a typo in exhibit A, and a new one was distributed to everybody tonight. It is actually in the resolutions we signed. Under cemetery lots slash cremation spaces, the maximum twelve cremation spaces, it was originally this, it's two thousand. It should be one thousand for each additional space. So this resolution removes the fees at Winter Garden Cemetery from the code and allows pass-through fees to work, it's hired out, allows the city manager to increase those and change those fees, has those companies that we hired to do that work change their pricing. As everybody knows, we have a very limited amount of space remaining at the cemetery, and the costs associated with the expansion and maintenance continue to rise. So we are recommending that the fees go up. We're changing it to be more consistent with surrounding cemeteries. I did an internet search, and the AI response showed the average price of cemetery plots in the Orlando area are around twenty-five hundred for a basic plot. In a public cemetery, it's over five thousand dollars, and a private plot, with prices reaching up to twenty-five thousand dollars for premium locations. Then I further researched individual surrounding cemeteries and found Orlando Memorial Gardens. Their average plot is thirty-nine hundred. Woodlawn, which is in Hotha, it averages five thousand. It goes as high as fifteen thousand. Highland Memorial Gardens in Hotha, the average is four thousand and sixty dollars. Oak Lawn Park Cemetery in Altamont Springs, it starts at fifty-two hundred. Glen Haven Memorial Park in Winter Park, averages forty-two hundred. Again, goes up to sixteen thousand. All Faith Memorial Park in Cassavere, averages forty-eight hundred and is high as eighty-nine hundred. Chapel Hill, Baldwin, Fairchild, and Orlando starts at forty-four ninety-five. And a COE cemetery, their plots are twelve hundred, and then each is fifteen hundred. We are recommending that plots go up to three thousand dollars and two thousand dollars for in each. We're also trying to encourage families to purchase one lot and use it for multiple burials due to our limited space. With that, the idea of burial comparison, we are recommending that if you put a body or interment in the ground in a single location, that'd be the three thousand dollars for interment, and then you could buy a headstone that could have six niches in it, and that would be another six thousand dollars. So a thousand dollars per niche. Cemetery lots, like I said, you could also put in a six-niche headstone and six more niches in the ground. So you could put up to twelve bodies in one location, and that would be twelve thousand dollars or one thousand dollars per burial location. If you look at what I've done on the spreadsheet that's up here, the cremation in one niche shows the maximum cost if you just bought a niche, which is two thousand dollars. It's got opening and closing, setup, chapel, extra chairs, and an extra tent. That would be three thousand nine hundred and forty dollars for the cemetery service. Now, these prices obviously don't include anything from a mortuary or funeral home. An interment for one ground space for all, everything you could get would be a total of five thousand three hundred and ninety dollars. And then if you did it at the lowest and for a niche for two thousand dollars, and then just got opening and closing for six hundred and thirty dollars, you could do it for two thousand six hundred and thirty dollars. Or a grave space at the lowest rate would be four thousand eighty dollars. If we move on to those twelve niches in the ground, it would be twelve thousand dollars plus a hundred and fifty for a foundation, and then the very, the twelve openings and closings. So you could do twelve of them for nineteen thousand seven hundred and ten dollars. Or if you chose to do one interment in the ground and then the six additional niches, you could do it for as low as thirteen thousand eight hundred and sixty dollars.
Could work, Steve. So if you did the twelve, it'd be sixteen forty-two per individual.
Right. So substantially lower.
Yeah.
But obviously, that's if you're being cremated.
Correct. The other way, you're two thousand three hundred.
Yeah. Right. I also calculated it out for an individual. So if you just did it separately, you did for twelve separate niches, it would cost a family thirty-one thousand five hundred and sixty dollars. Or if you did twelve separate grave spaces, it would cost forty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars. With that, staff will recommend approval of resolution twenty-five dash eleven. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions from the commission?
Move for approval of court amendments.
Resolution.
Resolution.
Twenty-five dash eleven.
We have a motion approved. We have a motion twenty-five eleven. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carried unanimously. Recommendation to approve utilizing city of Portland Beach piggyback. Yes, sir.
City uses lots of vendors to purchase our supplies. In order to do this, we often search for contracts with other municipalities that we use as piggyback contracts. There are several on tonight's agenda. This contract is with the city of Boynton Beach with Corne Man. Corne Man sells pipes, pipe fittings, other parts that we use for underground repair for our water sewer and reclaiming water lines. Staff will request the board for using the city of Boynton Beach contract for a piggyback contract. Happy to answer questions.
Questions from the commission? I had mentioned to John, this was the first of quite a few piggybacks. I don't think I've seen that before, but you're confident in piggybacking with this. If we went out and got separate bids, they would all be greater than this.
Yes, yes. We're confident that these are good prices. We're getting through all of these.
If they were locked in stuff two, three years ago, absolutely.
Yeah, a lot of them were, and they did, you know, somewhere next year, two years out and so forth.
Most of these are renewals, and some include price increases.
Yeah, I figure that in today's world, it's usually tied in contracts. Okay. Any questions? Need a motion?
I'm going to move on. All of them are just one at a time.
Just the one at a time.
All right, I don't need.
He had to explain the one, so we're going to do one at a time.
Uh, move to approve the piggyback of the city of Boynton Beach.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, this contract is with Clay County and Census USA Incorporated. We use Census to purchase all of our meters for water and reclaiming services. Staff will request the board approve using the Clay County contract as a piggyback contract. Move to approve the Clay County piggyback contract.
We have a motion to approve. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
This one's with Will Dan Engineering Incorporated. We have used them uh, to assist with our building inspections and plan review since twenty-twenty-three. Their contract with the city of Claremont was recently, recently extended. And uh, again, staff will request the board for using that as a piggyback contract. Move to approve Lake County piggyback contract.
I got a comment from someone that said, there's no rush. So anyway, uh, do we have a motion to approve?
To Lake County, yes.
Yeah. We have a second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. You may continue, sir.
Uh, this contract is with Lake County for DWC Outdoors and Hauling LLC. They do a lot of tree trimming in the driveways for us. And again, we request the board approve the piggyback contract.
Questions, sir? Any questions? Okay. Need a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, do we have a second? Second. Motion's second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Odyssey Manufacturing provides sodium hydrochloride, which is bleach. We use this at our water and wastewater treatment plants in large quantities. Uh, they have had their contract extended with Marion County, and we would request again, the board approve us to piggyback that contract.
Okay. Any questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve the piggyback with Odyssey Manufacturer and Company.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Shelley's Environmental Systems is, we use them to haul all of our biosolids or sludge from the wastewater treatment plant, and their contract with Port Orange has been extended.
I love the biosolids stabilization disposal services.
Shelley's Smelly's disposal services. I don't want to go there.
No, you don't want to go there. I just said that is a great description. Okay. Any questions?
I will move to approve the piggyback.
Okay, we have a second.
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Uh, where Lake Apopka Natural Gas. Okay.
It's a non-exclusive franchise agreement with Lake Apopka Natural Gas to allow them to continue installing and maintaining the natural gas lines within the city driveways. Uh, the agreement outlines all their responsibilities and fees, and it's a ten-year agreement with the option for an additional ten-year extension. Staff will recommend approval of this non-exclusive agreement. Happy to answer questions.
If the boundaries are, you know, decided by the DWC or, you know, the state, um, we have our district, Lake Apopka Tico has their district. I guess everybody didn't understand, not exclusive. Nobody else can come into the area.
That's what we use as a, it does mean somebody could come in, but those other contracts were regulations were prevented.
Yeah, okay. Any questions? Need a motion?
Motion to approve uh, the natural gas with uh, Apopka.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Good job, Steve. Great night. Thank you, sir.
Well, this is not a piggyback. Mayor Commissioners, um, this first item is to request the extension of the services and uh, allow the city manager to sign the addendum to the Inspire Health Partners contract. This is our social services component with the police department. They work hand-in-hand with Ebony, our own employee that most of you know. Um, there's no increase in price from last year. This is the same price that we paid last year. Uh, I would recommend that we approve the, the contract and allow the city manager to sign the addendum. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the commission? I think it's a very good program. We need a motion.
Motion to approve and authorize the city manager to sign.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, the next item is for us to renew and uh, continue along with our SmartCop. This is what we use as system for computer rated dispatch and records management system. Uh, we've been with them for about nineteen years, and this is a continuation. These funds are budgeted and I'd recommend approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Questions from the commission?
Have they started using AI, Chief, and all the help of the search and records management, or you don't know? That's an IT question.
It's common. It's common. The, uh, attorney officers use ChatGPT and their narratives already.
I will move to approve the recommendation for the SmartCop records management system.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners.
Special event for Rotary Club. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor Commissioners. Uh, the Rotary Club of Winter Garden is requesting to hold their annual poker tournament at Tanner Hall on Friday, November seventh, twenty-twenty-five. The event will run from two PM until one AM. The poker turn, tournament will raise money for the Rotary Club of Winter Garden, and the expected attendance is a hundred and fifty people. Uh, so that staff recommends approval of the Rotary Club poker tournament and to waive the permit fee since they will already be paying the rental fee for Tanner Hall. And I did want to note that I I made a mistake on that. The uh, the thousand dollars is for events that have two hundred folks and up. Uh, anything less than that is a hundred and fifty dollars. So the vote request is for a hundred and fifty dollar waiver, not a thousand.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
Sounds like somebody just participated.
Yes, I'll probably give away more money than that or lose more money than that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Um, the next special event is for the Winter Garden Art Association's annual fundraiser. Uh, they are requesting to have their annual fundraiser event on Friday, March sixth, twenty-twenty-six at the Winter Garden Pavilion. Uh, this event will run from seven PM to ten PM and include a sit-down dinner for two hundred and fifty guests, music by the Plant Street Five-O-One Band, catering by Market Table, and alcohol served for two bar locations. Uh, there will also be a wide art auction and artist demonstrations throughout the event. And so with that, staff recommends approval of the Winter Garden Art Association's annual fundraiser event with staff conditions.
Basically the same as last year.
Uh, essentially the same as last year.
Any questions?
Move to approve the special event, Mayor. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion's second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. General employee's pension voted.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mayor, this is for the quiet term of Board trustee Gretchen.
Tote, who has served us graciously. Thank you very much. Ms. Tote. Um, she would not be seeking to fill the seat um, or to renew, and we would need a a replacement for the.
She's not seeking to, that doesn't mean we can't appoint her. One clarifying. Up here, you don't have to seek.
You can't quit, though.
Okay, I'm.
And that's for, it's for a four-year term. That, that expired on September thirtieth, so. Just need one point.
Yes, I would like to appoint Lee Douglas.
Do we have a uh, motion to appoint Lee Douglas? Do we have a second?
Second.
Does anybody else have anybody to give?
I don't think with that, Mayor.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carries unanimously.
Ms. Tote, did you want to veto that or come back on up? No?
We thank you.
It, it was wonderful. I enjoyed doing it, but I'm getting older. And it's harder to get on that.
Your husband, you know, rather than you're not. But we thank you for your service.
In calendar years, but in spirit, I'm still young at heart.
That's right. We appreciate you. Thank you for the service and.
It was a pleasure and a privilege.
Everybody said you were an excellent board member, and they really appreciated your contribution to us, and we thank you for that.
One man's wife told me a story that made, I had planned to stop a couple of months earlier. And she told me a story and made me stay to the end of the quarter.
Well, thank you for staying.
So.
Okay, well, thank you. Members and citizens of Winter Garden here.
Good evening, ma'am. You're looking well, Mayor. My name is Marie Dorken. I'm the editor chief of Box Populi, wintergardenvox.com. If you're going to, I would piggyback on all of the news about fundraisers to um, tout my own. So many of you may not know that uh, Box Populi is locally owned and independent. They don't have a big media company behind us, so there is only fee. So we are having our second annual benefit concert on November eighth, seven to ten, at the Orlando College of Osteopathic Medicine. And the Greg Parnell Group will be providing the entertainment, and I have flyers here uh, for the ticket information. Tickets are seventy-five dollars. All proceeds go to benefit Box Populi, and we put it right back into the stories that you guys depend on. So just wanted to let you all know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Mayor, sort of our city attorney.
I'll pass to him later. Thank you. Had enough to say earlier today.
You did a good job, and I think, but you always do. We appreciate that. City manager?
Yes, sir. Got two items of good news. Uh, first is, if you recall, we canceled the Halloween event back on August fourteenth, and I think it's without a doubt, seeing that there was a pretty big void left uh, with our residents in downtown. Since that time, we have reached back out to the vendor that provides the projections on City Hall and to ask him if he was available to at least do the projections uh, during Halloween season. He uh, confirmed in the affirmative that he was. So we have proceeded to book him for October twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, the thirty-first, and November first from seven to nine PM for projections on City Hall only. Uh, the, the announcement has been put out on the city's website and distributed via social media, the downtown Facebook page. Estimated cost is ten thousand dollars or less. Uh, we think it will be less, but a little bit conservative than that. Second bit of good news is, excuse me, every two years, uh, for the last twelve years, the city has participated in the National Community Survey that's uh, from Polco. This is considered the gold standard for collective representative opinion data from residents to effectively gauge opinions regarding the quality of community characteristics, surveys, and governance. As part of the survey, Polco compares the results of the survey to other cities nationwide and selects top five cities for best in governance award in twelve categories consisting of trust of government, resident engagement, economy, education, arts, culture, health and wellness, community design, community connection, mobility, national environment, parks and recreation, safety, and utilities. And I'm pleased to announce that we have selected her as a top five performer in twenty-twenty-five Best in Governance Award for Community Connection. Uh, and we are competing against the city of Cordona, California, town of Davidson, North Carolina, town of Flower Mountain, Texas, city of Blues, Delaware. Uh, these four board program honored communities for both resident experience and measurable outcomes. Uh, this category uh, that we are competing in, we were chosen again to be top five out of three of the communities. On October, on October twenty-seventh, the national champion will be announced at the International City County Managers Conference in Tampa. And uh, this is just assessment to board leadership, our staff's leadership, our commitment to good governance, and dedication to building a stronger, more livable community. And so kudos, congratulations to you, Mayor, and Commissioner, all of our staff serving our residents and making Winter Garden such a wonderful place to live.
That is, that is fantastic. I think uh, same thing, I think we need to thank Commission, thank our city manager, and all of our staff. Just three local fans, a great place to live and be. And we want to thank y'all. Really did thank everyone that y'all appeared for.
The announcement was announced today on social media. We've also posted on our website as well.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Now, that'd be a term.
Uh, and a term. That's right.
I have another term.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner John?
Just want to say thank you to the city, thank you for the staff, the first responders and police department. Thank you for all the work that you guys do for putting yourselves in the line every day to answer calls and help anybody in need. I also want to thank you for sharing your story. Um, I know quite a few people close to me with it, and I, all I can say is thank you, and uh, I'll be having you in my prayers and kind of something. Mary, what's your happen? Thank you.
Yes, thank you to our wonderful staff and our city attorney and our city manager. Thank you guys for all the hard work that you do. And it's, it's so great to live in this city that we work together well, but we care for our residents, and your story was amazing. It really hit home. I'm actually living there right now with my sister. She's forty-five, but we're keeping her in this spirit. So thank you for sharing that. Just thank you for all of our residents coming out and listening to what's going on in our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Sharp?
I guess I'll have to drive to Tampa if we, uh, if you're going to go there. I'll be there with you if you do. We get it. So I don't have anything else to add, but thank you, everybody.
All right, is that? We do want to thank everyone once again. Thank you for your story. We will put you out there. Thank y'all for that little journey.